To the very public, oh, it stands, one nation under God, in this liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna real quick just repeat the Lemmonster School Committee's statement. The committee represents the needs of all Lemmonster Public Schools students in place of their interests above all others. We'll exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasonable, a reasoned assessment of all available information. We'll advocate for each school, each of our schools, and support high-quality public education in Lemmonster. Okay, at this point, we're gonna open it up for public comments. We're gonna start with anybody in person who would like to come up, microphone? Give anybody in person a second option to come up to microphone and give a public comment? And last call for anybody in person who would like to provide public comment. We're gonna switch over to the remote folks, and we're gonna open it up to public comment for anybody who's remote. Please unmute yourself and give your name and address, record. Once more, is there anybody remotely who would like to provide public comment? Please unmute yourself and give your name and address for the record.
There was one person, one person.
Okay.
Thanks, Misty Bangs, she just signed in.
Hello, I'm having trouble with camera, so it looks like everybody's off-camera, so that's fine.
That's okay, can you give your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Misty Bangs, and my address is 63 Flagler Road in Lemmonster.
Thank you.
Sure. Let's see, I wanted to start by saying just thank you for this opportunity to express not only my concern, but concerns of other parents that I've spoken with about this issue, just regarding the health and safety of our children concerning vaping. I wanted to bring to your attention the issue because I feel like it's rampant in the school system. For me, being able to buy the actual vapes in school from other students, of which some, not in our community so far, thank goodness, but have been found to be laced with other drugs and unfortunately resulted in a loss of life. The students selling these items seem to be getting them from Snapchat and other social media. Smoking in the bathrooms is happening every day. The peer pressure for getting other students to use these is unlike anything that I've ever seen in school and have heard of to this point. And because of this, I'd like to ask for tougher punishment for students bringing these things into schools, as well as students using them on school property. I'd like to move towards a zero tolerance policy for smoking on campuses throughout Lemmonster. I know that's a big feat, but I would just like to see policy in place that would take measures to really buckle down on this issue, as well as like a protocol as to what to do when this is found to be happening. I dealt with this a couple of times last year, and I feel like, you know, as, as the staff, everybody from the guidance counselors to teachers to the police officers on site, they're all very invested, but it just seems like there was a loss as to what to do because they see it so often that it seems hard to really get a hold of and something that they're able to control.
Your two minutes is up.
Say that again?
Your two minutes is up.
Oh, okay, sure.
Thank you. Final call for anybody remotely. If you would like to participate, please unmute and provide your name and address for the record. At this point, we are going to close public comment. Communications?
There are no communications this evening.
And superintendent report?
Thank you. So today, we just finished day 14 of the new school year. Might not seem like a lot, it's a lot, right, guys? We have our two students representing this year. Out of 180 days, 14 is quite a feat. So things have been running fairly well. We have, last year, last week, we had four open houses. This week, we have five. They are very well attended, based on trying to find a parking spot. So it was really nice to see the, this was the most open, open house I've ever seen. Children were invited, parents were invited, our two aunts and Grammys that snuck in as well. And teachers did a really nice job. So I'm really looking forward to see how that follows through this week. So five more this week, and the high school the following week. So it's been very busy. This coming Wednesday is an early release day. It's a professional development day for staff. So it's important that families know when dismissal time is for the individual students. I suggest that you either look on the website, call the school, look at the notices. I know that communication did go out, but the time's varied greatly over hours. So just be aware, you don't need any little Lemmonster students running around on Wednesdays and trying to get home, okay? COVID, I'm getting a lot of questions about COVID. We are following the CDC guidelines. It's on our website, you can speak with our nurses. If, if your child has symptoms but has not tested positive, they can come to school. It's within, uh, tested negative, sorry. If they're positive, stay home. Right now, it's allergy season two, so there's a lot of sniffling and talking going on as well, so please test. We have free tests. We are trying to give these away in droves, so if anyone needs one, talk to administration, talk to the school nurses, they will give you an extra test just to make sure, okay? So we don't want to bring COVID into the building if possible, but completely understand. So we are following CDC at this point. Big pieces that I keep talking about in my sending messages, and I've been speaking to the members of the school, my two goals around attendance and safety, COVID very, very important. Attendance, daily attendance must increase this year. We need our students to part of us who are ever going to get back and really build this culture of achievement. So I'm asking families to work with us as much as possible. I understand that there's illness and things come up, but please, as much as possible, try to have your children attend school. And then the flip side is around safety. I think every day last week, heard some story in a school in Massachusetts. So people, people are very concerned, and it's something that we talk about daily, daily. And there are components of our safety teams that I should not just leave by and tell them for certain reasons. But I do want families to know that every building has an individual plan. They're located in a certain place, that we, we've created these plans for police, fire, and oxygen burns management. We have allocated much of our resources to bring into classrooms for safety, on our computers, with our phone systems, the walk-to-talkies. We have a safety team, we have a district-wide safety team, which includes members of the departments in the city, which they know that each building has a safety plan. So these things are being reviewed all the time, updated all the time. The members of the police force, you leave with us to say, this is what it is now. There's two acronyms out there now. Our, our children have been, they have been trained the last five plus years on ALICE. They change the acronyms as things change. So we're really looking to bring the best in this most secure classrooms that we possibly can. And I have to be honest, the, the police department said, oh, you can never say anything's a hundred percent. Cannot say that. But what I can say is, there is such a strong, strong effort right now to keep our schools safe. Bring it back to a level where children shouldn't have to worry about walking to school daily, ever again. But we are training them, drills are happening. They don't feel good, but we are, we are practicing our drills. I'm asking families to talk to their children about the importance of being serious when you do these drills. It's not, we're not playing a game. Really listen to the adults, trust the adults, that we are going to keep you as safe as possible. So we are answering questions to the best of our abilities, but just know, it is, it's a non-negotiable in this, in this school department. Doors cannot be popped open for any incident, that would be a subordination right off the top. We have talked and said, they're as worried as everybody else. So the professionalism is very heightened, we have these conversations. And I think parents are noticing this even increased communication, not just what I'm saying, principals are reaching out very closely. This is a zero tolerance, we will not put up with this. So if we hear of any incident, we investigate everything, everything. So I will keep speaking about safety this year. I want to thank our families that inform us, hear more than we hear sometimes. So we get those messages back pretty quickly, and we take action. So it's gonna, this one will take us advantage, it's gonna take everybody in this city to make sure that we do our buildings safe. And lastly, I, I was thinking about, two weeks from today, our next meeting, I will be telling them how progress reports are going up. And that's how fast our year is flying, and that's how busy we are right now. There's a lot, a lot of changes and movements in the right direction. But it's going to go very quickly, first quarter will be over in a blink of an eye, so stay on top of us, keep our kids motivated, your staff motivated, go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I forgot, we got the student report, so who's giving that today?
They, no.
I let them off the hook for this week, it will be paired for the hard exam. It's their first meeting, I think I'm gonna throw them under the bus immediately, so, well, I don't think I can go next week.
All right. So we're on to presentations and discussion, and first one up is Dr. Romano.
Dr. Romano, please. So Dr. Joshua Romano is our new high school principal. I believe three of those from this board were part of the interview process. Had 16 applicants, this board brought it down to five, launched the interview over a two-day span, and came back with a unanimous recommendation for Dr. Joshua Romano to be the new principal at the high school. So we've gotten forward today, we're very happy that he's here. Things have just been getting in the way a little bit.
Sometimes, yes, so. Yeah, absolutely, so, you know, Josh Romano, I, I am something of a local guy, I grew up in Lunenburg. And then I taught at Lunenburg High School for, at Lunenburg High School and Apple High School for most of 15 years. I did lose a couple of years to go to Iraq for a couple of tours, New York, Cuba for a year, not on a vacation, again with the army. So, and then decided to get into administration, and I became the assistant principal at Murdock High School down the street. The other Blue Devils became the principal there for three years, and then went to Douglas for the last five years before coming back, kind of coming back to my home part of the state, to Douglas, to Lemmonster, sorry. Paul is referencing that I was supposed to go down to Cape Cod for the migrants that were sent up by Governor DeSantis, and it ended up that the, the situation was a lot smaller than they thought it was gonna have to be, and so they didn't need my help. And that is the first time that I've been asked to, like, leave my job to do army stuff in 10 years, so it was perfect timing, of course. Just as I'm trying to, like, still learn the building and learn all these people that are in it to find out what we might need you to help out down here for a few days. So it ended up being sort of a false alarm, and that was great, so I got to be here tonight. Oh, thank you very much, yeah. I've answered questions in this room before, so I'm happy to. Thank you.
I mean, obviously, getting invited with everyone and figuring out where everybody, seeing where the...
I, I was, on the second day of school, I discovered that there was an S wing, and I got a little nervous that maybe there was like a, a G through R wing that I didn't know about. I was missing a lot more, so.
And so short-term goals, a year from now, when you come back here, where you want to be? Because we can all understand it, so it's not, I was hoping for the situation, but I'm sure by now you've got specific things that you want to be judged by, right?
So the very short-term girl goal is, we need our students in class. We need them not hanging out in bathrooms, not roaming the halls, I need them in the classroom. And so the, the whole admin team has really cracked down on students roaming around, cutting classes. Just to kind of echo what Paula had said, you know, I need them at school, I need them in class, I need them at school on time. If they're not in school, it doesn't matter what we're doing in the classroom if students aren't in there. And so I want kids to be in the classroom so that the teachers can do the great things that they know how to do and get them ready for their, whatever opportunities that those students are looking for. So that's been the immediate goal. Short-term for the course of the year is to integrate the new curriculum that we have for English and math, because I think that those are key steps to getting us not just where we were before COVID, but eventually getting us beyond that. So there's no, no illusion that COVID didn't have a detrimental impact on student achievement, and it's gonna take a little time to catch up on that. I think those new curriculum can help, and I think if we can get a little focus on the executive functioning skills that students missed out on when they were home on Zoom instead of in school, working with their peers, I think that those, if we can get those three things, get them in class, get the new curriculum down, and maybe build up some executive functioning skills, I think that those three things can get us a long way towards where we need to be a year from now, two years from now, 20 years from now. I'll be retired by then, but those are the immediate goals.
Anybody else? So, we'll probably, I say this, but, but where, how long do you feel that it'll take for your school to get back to pandemic, pre-pandemic levels?
It's a little hard to say yet. I won't, I, I need to do a full assessment, it's gonna take a little bit of time. You can't fix two and a half years of damage in two and a half months. It's gonna take a little bit of time to get things caught up. I would say, I, I'd like to see where we are at the end of this year with the new curriculum and how that helps us to get back on the track that we need to be on. But it's, it's not gonna be an overnight fix. But I think the tools are in place, the, the effort is there, and there's a lot of research now on what schools are doing to fix those things, from intervention to the way that you loop around to get kids caught back up in curriculum that they've missed out. I wish I could tell you, you know, in two weeks, we'll be back where we were, but I don't think that that's... If I could do one last plug, because one of the things that, that really struck me here between, like, the football game and going to soccer games and other things that I've seen go on, there's a lot of amazing things going on at LHS and talking to students at the football game. Obviously, morale gets a little high when you're, you know, 2-0, when you've outscored your opponents 90 to 6. But kids told me that, you know, we need to be able to share these things out with the community, and of course, you know, I used, I used Twitter at my last school, but Twitter is out of style now. And one, one kid said Facebook's gross, so don't use Facebook, so. So I did start an Instagram, which is different from Instacart. Instacart is the food service thing. Instagram is the, is the, I'm not 100% sure how it works yet, but, so I did start an Instagram for the school. I, I have two posts on there, people can see them, I, I checked. It's LHS Blue Devils Nation. LHS Blue Devil, Blue Devil Nation, LHS Blue Devil Nation. I would love for you to follow me, and, and, you know, especially, like, kids send me pictures of things that are going on, coaches, advisors, if they send me pictures of things that are going on, and, and I'll get better at, at sending that stuff out there. So I'm gonna have some kids explain how it works, so they'll be the best teachers for that. So that's my little plug for social media for, for Lemmonster High School.
We have a, we have a education channel, local education. And we spent a quick deal of time negotiating with Cablevision for us to get that extra channel, and it gets on the news right now. And then we donated a ton of equipment that's sitting upstairs in Gallagher that's now outdated. But you have full use of Access Publishing, Kyle Camerini is the technical director there. And they were both, I mean, it's, it's, it's an exclusive education channel. And all the equipment is there for the students to learn how to use, production, take modern technology, like, everybody's got a phone. Is that behavior enough to follow there anymore? They think I'll be with editing, learning how to edit from your phone, and sending it in. So just keep that going, because that's something that thousands of people still subscribe to cable movement basis and get the education channel.
Oh, that's great, I actually have some stuff I could put on there now, actually, I need another one.
One of the few communities in the country that has an, an actual community that has a local radio station. It's a low-power, you can hear it from everywhere. And that's another thing that's unutilized by the school. So today, you can't just get your message all at one place. You used to be able to buy the newspaper, everything was in the newspaper, from the weather to, you know, births, horses.
Sports and everything else.
You saw him in Facebook being out of date, reflecting on the newspaper. You missed my, you missed my point perhaps. I said, one time, you used to be able to get it from there, but you can no longer get it there and you're going to have to be in all of these other places. You can no longer just be in one place. And so all of this is, is that you're effectively called if you'd like to use it.
Sounds great. I know how to use those a little bit better than I know how to use Insta, Instagram, so. I almost said instant, I almost said Insta-tweet, so.
As much as people don't like Facebook, when you post it on Facebook, it gets put over to Instagram.
Yep.
So, there you go.
Thank you.
Mr. Josh.
Thank you.
I just, I just have one question or request. If you could invite us to the thing that you want us to be present, we'll make an effort to be there.
Absolutely.
Especially the school spirit events, anything like that. It's, it's a lot to try and keep up with, the school calendars are all, all over the city. But if we get an email directly from a school principal, yeah, we'll definitely go.
Yeah, I'd love to have you folks there.
This is the most active school committee in terms of showing up to events. And now we have two new members that, you know, happens to junior members, right?
You get all the work.
But, yeah, it's a very active school committee. And sometimes Hector shows up, other times it's two or three or four, but like Josh said, they all have full-time jobs. I knew, but I have easier accessibility. They don't have time unless they check to see where everything is, and check an email box just to find out what's going on. And there's something you really need to do, everyone who's here, just let everybody, if you know, let us know as soon as possible. So they can, they can actually change their schedules and take their time off to make it to these events.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Romano.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we have opening day.
Just real quick, opening day was actually a great cultural building event. We had the commissioner of education come out and speak to our staff. We knew that we wanted to be quick and concise, so we began our staffs back into the building as quickly as possible and prepared for students. He was open and honest, well entertaining, and what I've heard since then was that they just didn't expect him to be that real. And no, like, just, that's how he is. He's been in education for so many years, he understands where we're at, and he is a real advocate of it. So it was a pleasure to have him there. I want to welcome, thank the members from this school committee that showed up as well. It's really important to have events like that so that our staff understands we're all in this together. But in the room, we had over 1,000 members in there, all Paris, keys, teachers, secretaries, custodians, who name it, everybody's in the room. And that's the one time a year that we can do it. So it was really important, after so many years of not being able to do it, to bring us together as a community. But it really set the pace. And so opening day for students was the very next morning, and things were going to be insane about that. Pretty smooth transition, strains one through 12 just happened. Students dropped right into routines and protocols like they had just agreed. Expectation had greatly improved. And then the following week, we introduced our littlest customers, our 15Ks, without interruption. Everybody took care of one another. So this year's opening day was just such a nice climate and culture building experience that I'm hoping that we can carry this right through generations. Thank you for attending.
And our student representatives, keep in mind, the school committee wanted you to be on committee, so your feedback on any issues, both shy, we need feedback. And the whole point of having one school committees, so other members, so that your population, the student population knows who you are and knows when there's an issue, would bring it to you. So we know we're moving in the right, right? I mean, we may think we're in the right direction, but we really need the feedback.
Yes, I just want that, so I know how it works, can I just raise my hand?
Yes, you can, absolutely. Do we get the name tags yet, so the world knows where you are?
I watched.
You take out. Actually did have something, I didn't know if I should raise my hand or something before. I had something about, when you mentioned the progress reports. I was just talking to a kid on my cross-country team today who told me, he didn't really ask, he just told me, he's like, I'm hoping you can bring up to the school committee that he'd really like to have printed progress reports. I don't know if we're planning on doing that this year, but I've heard of it from other people too, a little bit. I don't think it's too big of a deal, but if it's easy, you know.
It's a good suggestion, thank you.
Gee, that's what days do you win. I was with Louie. Okay, we're gonna move now on to some school report.
Renee Casca and Laura Van Duren.
We do the ESL one first, then the summer school, because that's the first one.
Well, again, Steve, this is incredible technology, I've heard nothing but positive forms of community about the quality and being able to see everyone and think they're gonna interact. And I, I'm gonna think of watching tonight, that's an accurate number update. So I know it's a lot more than buzz.
It's, it's good feedback, and we are excited, we're close, to be able to have the two flat panels and our new microphones, we're just waiting on some programming, and we're waiting on a piece for the new microphones. The supply chain delay has, has hurt in that regards, but we're close.
Did you ever find out if anyone that's watching can wipe, can sort of post caption in other languages?
We switched two teams from Zoom, so I'm not quite sure about that. Kyle's on right now, so I'm sorry, he can write that down.
Bless you next.
Let's ask you. For us to look into.
I think we did get even more, and that's one of our things is more outreach, trying to get more people involved in, and just another way to do it. But do we know by the next meeting whether or not that's possible? Is it a soft, in other words, this is a separate program, right? It's a totally separate than Zoom.
Microsoft Teams is Microsoft's answer to Zoom, it's comparable.
So if there are any royalties later on, if they develop this, I'm gonna get a patent on it tomorrow, if there's any royalties. I want a piece of the action.
So a lot of our viewers watch a recording on LTV.
Yes.
And so, you know.
He can post caption, but I hope he can do it.
I just don't know about the live feature during the meeting.
I'll talk to Kyle tomorrow, and then maybe you can check with the Microsoft, see whether or not they offer it.
Kyle will follow up with that.
Well, let me bring my, let me get, let me get, I want to get a patent. Patent pending.
On their own.
I'll share, by the way.
And if you have the patent, you win.
Should you have the patent? Should the hospital have the patent?
I already claimed it.
Maybe, I'm gonna claim it.
See, Kyle wants to get on.
Okay, you're on, Brittany.
All right, welcome, thank you for having me tonight. Tonight, we are going to start off with some ESL access presentation around our stores from access testing. But I wanted to just build a little background, so you understand what that test does and what our students have to do to get the score that they actually get. So ESL is English. So ESL is English Second Language, stands for that. And access is the name of the test that we used to test them in January, which is state mandated by federal government. And that stands for assessing comprehension and communication in English. State to state for any L students. So most of our L students, whether they come to us from a different country and we test them here or they come from a different state, we receive scores and they do get, we get their records or we call ahead. Next slide, good job. English English learner is a student who has the opportunity to receive instruction in English. In addition to taking all the other content areas. The Ls are tested every year to help teachers understand their language skills. So some of our students who come in as level ones, newbies, obviously they start off with no language skills. And then hopefully they, over the year of instruction, they build on those language skills. The language domain is consistent of four different areas. Students use listening, speaking, reading and writing skills to learn academic content. And those are the four areas that they are tested in using the access test. These skills that all students work through throughout their whole education and language testing measures a student's skill in all these four domains during this access test. The access test is taken individually. So it's not like we all throw them in a room and they test, you know, on the MCAS. Basically, they have to be up to four students in a room for small group. But every student, so right now currently that's eight hundred and fifty six students, will have the speaking test given to them individually. So as you can see, January, when we do testing like this, it's everything stops and we test kids. So I also included in your, on the next page, the students get a report. And I included that in that sample report I put in the side of this. On that, I included that in the packet. So an individual student report is given to every student after access is completed and scoring. The four domains are there. You have listening, speaking, reading and writing. So when we have composite areas, which we used to tell me if they have made their gains or not. You can see our composite areas. Oral language is a composite of fifty percent listening, fifty percent speaking. The literacy composite, which they need to receive a three point nine or better, is reading fifty percent, writing fifty percent. Their comprehension is seventy percent of the reading and thirty percent of the listening piece. Overall, which is their overall composite, which they need a four point two to be released from the L program and become a FEL is thirty five percent reading, thirty five percent writing, fifteen percent listening and fifteen percent speaking. ESL certified teachers push in and pull out services for all our ESL students. Specifically on just language acquisition. Levels ones and twos, they get anywhere between forty five and sixty minutes with support in the classroom from interventions staff in their content areas, social studies, science, math. At the high school, level ones and twos have two full periods, same with middle school. So those are sixty and sixty. At the elementary level, it's a little different. I have to say kudos to our element, our elementary teachers because the students come in there with a level one and two. They get pulled out for thirty, forty five minutes, sometimes sixty, depending on they're brand new. And the rest of the day, they're incorporated in their classroom with their peers, learning instruction like their peers. So they have role models, they have students that they can watch and listen to and communicate with on a daily basis. Level three, which is a little lower, lower level, they can be, they can be pulled out if they're between a three and three point five, about thirty minutes. And if they're above a three point five, we do mostly push in with our tutors and pairs to support them. So they're getting the grade level materials and they're accessing the grade level materials as much as possible with support from our pairs and aides. And level four is total integration. We, our level fours have just missed it by a point one or a point two. And we feel that the instruction in the classroom with their peers, that they will grow and be ready to move on after they take the access test again for the next year. And by then, by level four, especially in middle school and high school, a lot of our parents will ask for that. They don't want them in the, just the English classes any longer. They really want them incorporated with their peers. So these test scores that we have sitting in front of us individually, we can use them as benchmarks. We do reclassification decisions. Every year I meet with all the ESL teachers and I meet on every student, eight hundred and forty three last year in June. And we reclassify them according to their score and according to all their data. We don't, this is one type of data, but we also look at their math or their dibbles or their eye ready. And also what the teacher has for formative and substantive assessments moving forward. Because as you know, it's really hard when you take a test in January. There's January to June. We're hoping there's a little bit more growth there. And we're using the teachers' materials too to help with some of the decision making and placing students. So last year, this is the, what we talked about. And so if you look at, if you look at the zero point, anything in the blue are the kids who had moved in a positive way. Anyone in the red might have gone down just a little bit. So that's how we get thirty five students who stayed the same. And the students who have dropped a little bit in their levels, either A has, was fully remote. And the previous year and is really just trying to catch up. Some students do not take the test as seriously, which we are trying to improve on that piece. Because honestly, in the high school, when we polled students, they don't want to leave those classes because it's their really secure. That's a secure place as being in those classes with their peers. And they say, well, let's see, if we pass it, then we have to be out. So we're really trying to build those bonds and having, making sure that kids are being out in the classrooms and making those content moves and establishing those friendship with their friends. So they're feeling comfortable to move on and, and come out of those classrooms. Okay, so now it's summer programming. So any questions on that piece that we just discussed?
Did you run a summer program ESL?
Our ESLs are invited to anything that we do in there except the first thing, not just specific.
It's been interesting to see out of the seven, how they did for the summer.
So in the previous years, we used to run just strictly ESL at the middle school and the high school, and I have no students participating. They participate in the enrichment pieces and then in elementary, they all go to the, the elementary one. But they're working. So a lot of my L students do have jobs. We're really trying to make sure that we have been conscious about them coming to school. Like we have a couple of people on plans where they're in school just to get their English. And, and hoping that they stick with it with a couple of online things with ingenuity so that they don't leave us. We want them to graduate with a degree. So we're really trying to make sure that that happens. Melissa.
Assuming, you said that if it's, they try to pair kids in classrooms with same language peers. What are you doing in situations where maybe there aren't a lot of?
So that really used, yeah, so there's only maybe one or two right now that we really have that issue. But where the increase before, it used to be Portuguese. And now, I mean, there's foreign class. So with, we haven't really had that difficulty. We have more of that difficulty, like I said, with like three or four of the high school students right now that we don't have someone to parent with and we're looking for some of that support. The ones that we don't, I mean, all our level ones and twos have access to a tablet where they can translate. Every school has that. That was one of our goals when they came back last year. So every school teacher who needs that, we also have our parent liaisons. Any of our newcomers coming in, they are now going and following them around for the first two days or three days to establish them in the classrooms and to make sure they are comfortable using their tablet and that piece. So we really are, we're honing in on, on making sure that they are ready to, you know, engage and, and learn.
Translate has been crucial.
Yeah.
Listen, so what kind of support do you offer for them out there? And where like, especially with parents that might have a hard time as well, yeah, with some of these programs.
So that's funny that you ask. So last year in January, we started adult English classes. And we had around two classes. We had about fifty adults coming to these classes. And then we actually had like fifteen that were remote on Saturday and Sunday. Because that's how much they wanted to learn. And then in the spring, we ran another one and I think there was like a hundred people in these classes. The only difficulty, I am having a little difficulty with babysitting. So if any of the high school kids want to babysit, a lot of parents are coming with their kids so that they not, so that, because they want to learn English and they both want to learn. They don't want one to go and one to stay. At this time, I have an advertisement out and I have right now four classes running this fall, starting in October for adults. So we're doing a lot around that piece. When we have enough buses, I can run an after school program. My problem is I don't have enough buses, but we have an LPAC that is up and running. It is a huge access for us and you will meet them again because I like to bring them up in front. They work hard. They are, you know, they're part of our, they meet with our parent liaison. So they talk about things that are going on in the community and what the concerns are. And they're there to support each other. So, but I think our parent liaisons right now are a huge help for our families where they attend meetings. They're able to speak the languages. If not, we're moving like if someone's Portuguese and I have someone at the high school, she goes to the elementary. So they're really working together as a team to make sure our families are supported.
Brandon, can you just clarify one thing? So it's all L students that no matter what level they're at, they're taking the access test. And then once they have gotten that four points, they don't.
No, so once they have that four point two, or in a three point nine in literacy, they're called FEL. So their former English language, but doesn't mean that we have to, we don't just go like this. We have to monitor them for four years and send progress reports home every quarter for those students. So it has been times, it's not like every day, but there's been times when we brought back those FELs who, like especially at the pandemic, we brought back a couple who needed the extra support. So they had that English refresher. And so we don't ever tell someone they're out and they can't come back in.
And the other thing, I think the graph wise, it's positive seeing so many students have moved up. You know, when we're worried about kids falling back. For the ones who have fallen back, I mean, I think it's good news. It's concentrated on the lower end of the falling back. But what are we doing for extra support?
So my E L teachers also have to do student informational plans. So every student who does not make their goal, the state assigns each student a goal each year. And so when that student is working towards that goal, if it's not met, my ESL teachers have to put student improvement plans in place for them. And the parents sign them at conferences and then we work on those goals. In January, in March, they get a update of where those students are in those goals. And hopefully by June, and we get the access test back that we have met those goals. And they stay on S I P plan until they meet that goal each year.
I just want to make sure that, you know, communicated to effectively like about this type of thing. Because last year I would see a couple of times in my math class. But I think that either the teacher was a little negligent or just didn't really understand that the person didn't like speak English that well. But she seemed to kind of maybe get a little mixed up out of his disrespect sometimes. And I, this could just be a one time case, but I just really want to make sure that we make sure that all our ESL students are like, you know, comfortable with that.
So, yeah, so that's a good point. And, and our teachers have reached out to us. So on November eighth, we are having some PD around appropriate SEI strategies, like a refresher and around that cultural background and understanding. So our teachers have definitely reached out with their uncomfortability, especially because we have, you know, we've tripled our load of BSLs in the last five years. So now they're feeling that, that more than one, you know, that's, it's four or five. So we are definitely going to do that refresher for them and give them some good strategies. Thank you.
Are those paid positions for the students who might be watching the?
Babysitting, babysitting.
Oh, I don't know. I think I can maybe do a stipend or like I looked at, I reached out to the, um, um, Honest Society. I know they need community building hours. So that might be something that they can do. You know what I mean? So.
There's always students calling our office that live in.
Yeah. So if you wanted to send them my name, go ahead because we definitely, I mean, last year, if you guys, most of you guys know Pam Judd and that. But she literally had twenty two adults and then she had like nine students on like Lexia and Zern. And she was over there trying to teach them, as she teaches the parents how to speak English.
To learn magic.
Yeah. So she had magic, all right. She was standing upside, I think on top of her head. But, but the kids are excited to be there too because their parents are learning and they feel like they're in school. And like if you go to these celebrations, they're big, I mean, they come and they're excited to pass the level one. The adults, they're doing work. And we have, like I said, we have four classes that are going to run in October and they are already booked. And we're waiting for December. So it's a great opportunity for our, and the high school wholesome. So they like being here. So.
That's a lot of people. That is a lot of people wishing. I don't know, there aren't many places anymore that are doing. I, I know. Turns out, well, personal life is not the one that I think that.
So I choose it.
Not what she does at the mom's stuff. Spanish American Center, but they have to be like all the time and at every hour of the day. So that no matter what shift you work, weekends nights and. Life church, I think still does.
I mean, Sunday or Thursday.
Everybody. I had grandparents there last year who her dying wish was to learn English before she goes on her bucket list. I'm like, oh, great. I hope we were successful. She goes, I'll be for level two next year. I'm like, okay.
We have the principal here at the high school. So maybe we, and between that and the students, maybe we can work together to kind of push that out, let people know.
Definitely that shit.
And especially since she.
I gotta make sure Larissa is okay with that. Larissa is my funding source. I gotta make sure that's okay, but we'll figure out something.
Yeah, yeah, all the time.
And also give this.
That's a great, they run a great program, but one person, Keenan.
Yeah. And then we also have, we met with the LPAC and they're doing four huge family nights too. We're going to try to do it here at the high school. I've already been in for those dates. And we'll be looking for our high school students to help us with that too. We want to do a couple of, let's different centers and make it theme based to bring these parents in. They know that food and fun brings parents in.
Can you let us know when those arrogant members that can report back if they go?
Sure.
Mr. Ron.
Some more question. When you were saying about the individual report, the oral language, fifty percent listening and speaking, you didn't give us, you know, like, you said for literacy, fifty percent reading and writing, you said they have to pass at least three point nine. Comprehension, you didn't say what the number was, but overall reading, writing, listening and speaking, you said four point two.
That's the only two requirements they have to pass.
Okay.
So I'll be honest with you, the speaking test has been rough, even at the DESI level, not just us. But like we've bought in different microphones because they think that students may not speaking loud enough. So they're not accounting that as a, what they need to do to pass English. But they, they do include it in their, in their composite. But they, they are, you know, they, they do, it's basically reading and writing comprehension.
You have the problem, Richard. You know, you were saying you had eight hundred and fifty, about eight hundred and fifty kids, right?
Yes.
And I did a very, very dirty, rough estimate. The numbers you got here, three ninety seven, thirty five, one forty five comes out to five seventy seven.
That was.
That's the total of students in.
That was last year. That was last year in January who took the test.
Right. But then out of that, where's two seventy three, what happened?
So right now, currently that, so last year, that's how many students took this test in access. Some chose not to take it because they still weren't into the COVID and some are absent from it. But right now, currently in, right now, as of today's date, we have.
Numbers that you give us, they're not.
They're January's numbers from twenty twenty two. Yeah.
The last year's.
Last year's.
What do you mean kids?
The last year in January.
That these numbers are.
These are the ones that took the test. So we might, we probably did not have about fifty of them that did not take the test back then. For whatever reason. So they can reject it. They don't have to take it. Not that we, we don't, we try to talk them into making sure that they take it. But with last year, we still had the in and out of COVID and we only have a five week window to give the test.
The other part that I was, somebody else was gonna ask a question. When they're transitioning from ESL to English.
Yeah.
What's the percentage of those that they're not doing very well in English and they prefer to use their native tongue? What's the percentage of those that they're not doing very well in English and they prefer to use their native tongue? How many, how many opt, can they opt? What happens?
So are you asking if they get off to speak in their own language?
Yeah.
During class time?
Yeah.
A lot of them don't, um, because that's just, I mean, they've learned that in their classroom time, they're speaking English with their peers.
Have you met, have you had any of that?
Nope. We really, once they fell, Ronnie, I mean, we keep track of them. They just keep moving and they're just, they're with their peers. Um, and they keep moving. Like I said, we only had maybe one or two in the past three years due to not being in school and um, COVID that they actually came back to us in the L program to get language again, because they were at home speaking their only native language the whole time and, and lost it a little bit and have to come back. Otherwise, most of our students, I'd say all our students keep progressing nicely and they speak English when they're in the regular classrooms. I'm not gonna say they don't speak a different language in the hallways with their friends, because that's what you hear all the time.
You cannot bet that at the instant, they're talking in the hallway because they don't want the teacher. But no, I'm telling you, that's a, that's something you need to address.
Yeah.
Because
It's, it's so funny too, though.
I want to know what they have to say about it.
So Ronnie.
I want you to go and talk about, talk in French. I speak French.
So Ronnie, I'll give you an incident. We were in a, Ronnie, I'll give you a, a certain thing. And we were in a class on Friday, listening to their presentations, the level one, two presentations. And um, they were speaking their own language within, within themselves. A lot of us have our translators on, so they know that. So they don't, they're not just, they're not being disrespectful to the teacher. They're talking about what the student might have liked on their presentation. Someone said, I put soccer too, because I like playing soccer. I'm on the soccer team. So I think that if it's set properly and the teachers are doing what they're supposed to be doing, they know that teachers all have translators. All my teachers have an iPad or a tablet in front of them, that teachers are gonna know if something's being said. So I think that they're really respectful during the classroom time. I do.
A large portion of my, like math class last year, which had like, so sorry, but a large portion of that were uh, ESL students. And I noticed that most of them tried to speak English as much as they could. The ones who struggled, you know, their friends might translate or help them through it. But overall, they seem to have the general culture that they wanted to continue trying to speak English just for their own benefit.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The goal is not to get them, yet.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
Ron, did you go to say to say this?
Yes.
You want a question? Did you speak French to your friends?
Yeah.
Guilty as charged. That's all I'll say then.
Well, I'm in two languages, but the French that I spoke, I would criticize because the French I spoke was the French of
The Quebec.
Not the French.
Some of its culture. I think, I think it's, I think what you've done is remarkable. The students, obviously the sooner the students can learn, the better. It's harder and harder to get older.
It is.
Anybody that's riding around with that, they've changed it now. It's a new company. But uh, you know, anybody that's riding around trying to learn another you forget, you know, a phrase after you come out of the grocery store, after you, you know, mimic it for two and a half hours. So they, they'll use it. I think you just explained it perfectly. They'll, they'll use it. If they struggle, they have a friend that might interpret and then
And some of our pairs and tutors have to go and interpret like if they don't quite understand and that's okay. And then they talk back and then, you know, let's walk through this in English now that you understand.
And parents, grandparents, a triangle in language, you'll learn it from their grandkids or their kids. And if we can run enough of these programs, and as she said, if we had a bus, if people up move around, if other people in the community, Mount Wachusen, I don't see, that's the problem. Everybody's doing something, but you can't find it all in one place. You got everything. It's out there. It's, oh, it's on my website. Yeah. It's on a thousand websites. Now I'm all day to go looking for it.
Yeah.
That's the problem. And we need to spend more time sharing.
And there's still people who are doing it remotely. We still offer remote for one, for people who can't leave their house.
Yeah.
Or like I said, there was, it was remote on Saturday and Sunday. I was watching it at six o'clock on Saturday night and I'm thinking to myself, wow, like this is dedication if they want to sit down and learn English at six o'clock on a Saturday night. So I was getting ready to go out and have a little dinner, but that's okay. Um, but they
Consideration where they, people become, you know, naturalized, United States is amazing.
Yeah.
Incredible.
And when they graduate their last night and they bring their cultural food, they usually do like a little thing. They are dressed to the hilt and they are so proud to be there. And they share what their goal was for the, you know, for the um, class. Um, and so I'll have to invite you to come to some of the graduation. Um, cause it's really, um, it was different. Like I came
I'm on summer school.
All right. You ready?
Are we there?
Yeah, we're there. So I'm just a public school summer programming. Um, so again, once again, this summer, it was a, um, it was a buzzing summer year. Um, I can't go without a big shout out and a thank you to our coordinators. Um, we had Kelly and Andrea at getting ready for kindergarten and elementary and Rich Summer School at Fallbrook and JA. We have Samantha Como, who did middle school, high school credit recovery and the enrichments that took place here. Um, we had Daniel Beishon and Chris Kynes for the CTI explosive exploratory. And then of course Mindy and her staff, Christina and that staff and creative choices were there from six thirty till five o'clock at night every day for um, our students and their availability. And then again, all our teachers, our tutors, our pairs, our parent liaisons who worked with our schools and families this, this, when these programs, it was phenomenal. It was probably one of the best easy run. Our bus company had things ready to go. Yep. We're early organized now by sending everything ahead of time, but they were um, ready to go and a few hiccups and they added people in and out. So it was a great start. So just to let you know what happened, getting ready for kindergarten, um, and um, started, we had two, we had, we started off with two classrooms, but we only ended up running one classroom in each building. With six to eight new newbies, little five-year-olds running around the building. And what I'm saying, first time in school, running around the building, playing hide and go seek. Come find us. But they were great. We had one in each building. Um, our elementary enrichment summer school program for K through um, fifth grade was a huge success. Each had a hundred and ten to a hundred and thirteen students attend every day with about fifty uh, each of the schools that had two weeks. You know, two weeks in the beginning, two weeks at the end, even though we were trying to avoid that, but it's kind of hard to say no. So they were, they were attending that. Next. Middle school and credit recovery, we had five weeks of that. For middle school, we had about eighty-one combined, which was a lot less than last year. Some of those kids, um, those numbers are counted twice if they had to do um, two classes. And then the three high schools, we had one students. Um, and like again, some of those were counted twice. Um, but that ran smoothly, smoothly and we had a higher percent of pass rate than we've had in the past. So kids were ready to come in, learn, and we did up our ante about having s- teachers and staff there to support them. And we also ran a program that Yasmin Rosado had um, have done, that she had tutors, kids, student tutors there. And they were able to be paid for their work, to work with their own classmates, to help them in this process. And that was great. And our students ate it up. They liked being with the tutors rather than the teachers, but the teachers were there to, to make sure there was anything that they needed. So that was a great um, addition this year to our program for credit recovery. And the enrichments, not as big as it sells, it has been in the past. Um, but we still had a lot of students um, attend the um, enrichments. Um, and those were art, graphic arts, social emotional and robotics.
We also had four programs.
Like the Y, you know, the Y, yeah.
Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah.
The churches did things this year that some never did. Our, our
Rec department was back up to full capacity. Yep.
They were packed on and private groups were doing things up there. So this year in a good way.
Yes.
So the point is, everybody's offering something for the menu together. And then the Spanish Americans said, every day I went by. Places back, they only offer breakfast and food and lunch. So I, I think if you looked at, at the total amount of students participating in the city, it's more than seven.
Definitely, definitely.
We ran the police academies again at five weeks.
Oh yeah, we saw that at the um, yeah, at the Boys and Girls Club.
It's, yeah, exactly. Not any kid runs the same thing.
So we had the eighth grade summer freshman, or the freshman academy for summer school up at um, the boat. They had forty eighth graders here um, from both middle schools participating. Um, and with a little bit of um, they were creating different things and all the shocks. So it was pretty cool. They were really excited to start the school year off this year. And then again, we had creative choices at Francis Drake, who had kindergarten through fifth grade. And they were there for most of the summer and they had a hundred and twenty plus students every week. Next. So our unsung heroes, the summer programming. But before I go on to that, um, um, Kyle, can you go to the next slide that's um, sped so that, yes, thank you.
Thanks. Just in case Renee needed a little break there.
Hold on, me, drink some coffee.
So to round out the picture of what was going on in Leavenster this summer, we did also have our special education extended school year. Uh, so depending on what was in a student's IEP, they would attend for either two days or four days. We had a program running at Samson Preschool and that was run by Molly Armstrong. Nope, I mixed them up. Molly Gallagher and Kelly Armstrong. Uh, what was nice there is they work with the students throughout the school year. So then they had familiar administrators at their summer program. Um, at Francis Drake, that was run by Michelle Del Greco, and that was our K to five programming. With the exception of Priest Street, if we had students who had gone to Priest Street for K, they stayed with that early childhoods because that was the staff they were used to try and make that summer transition a little easier for them. And then up at the high school, we had the middle school and high school programs run by Steve McCahey. Bless you. We definitely definitely saw some crossover in the different programs and we had parents electing to, okay, I want to access some of my extended school year through this program, but then I also want to go to one of these enrichments. I want to check out the police academy. I mean, these kids were doing everything. They were busy. Uh, the only other piece to that is just that we were offering all of our services. We were able to staff the programs really nicely and make sure that the students had what they needed. So we didn't see any regression going back into this full year. It was pretty successful. Very busy summer.
Kyle, the one before. So we could never have done this without our unsung heroes, which um, Laura and I are very appreciative in our building. So you know, first of all, our staff who dedicates their summer for this, um, five weeks of their summer of this, the students who come in and out of schools, but Bob Burr and his staff at Chatwells offered free breakfast and free lunch for anyone who walked through this building every day. Um, the custodians who kept our, our rooms cleaned, um, on top of doing everything else that they had the list of check offs. So those are huge pieces of that. Our bus drivers, they were really great this year, um, this summer, even though there were some, you know, like, you know, there's always blips or a student, they're just so easygoing. They pick up the student or like, we're not sure where this one's going, but here he is. Um, and then they would come, like the first couple of days when they were at the wrong bus, because we had buses going left, right and center. Um, they would come and pick up and bring them to the school they're supposed to. They're very flexible. So we, we appreciate that. And then I can't do, I have to do a shout out to Beth Wilson and her team. Every morning, we got a morning announcements from Beth Wilson. Um, and they played them and the kids loved them. Just, um, she did a nice recording for all our students to see every morning. So that's our take on summer school. For summer opportunities.
Thank you. Thank you very much. See, I did a quick search and I know nothing about any of this, but apparently it says uh, if you're using Microsoft Teams, they claim as of January first, that they can participate in access to English and secure delivery of simultaneous interpretation. What they said. After that.
Thank you. That's
Tell you, it looks like it might offer something.
So get us started, right?
I don't know. I can't. That's my that's my help.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna move now on to minutes, rule of the minutes for August twenty-second.
Question to print the minutes for August twenty-second.
All right. Everybody's had a chance to look at them. Any, are there submissions, questions or comments? Yes, sir. Let's do a representative. Yes, they should. All right. All in favor? Signify usual man. Yeah, he would be raising a hand. He would be in his papers. Um, he tested me. He was on ninety-five. I don't know if you're listening or I know, I just got off the road myself. So so bad today. August morning, the rain sat down. All right. So we are, uh, we're gonna do transportation update. Do we have one?
Uh, just very quickly, I wanted you to see the reports around ridership versus walking and how much our students are utilizing the transportation or um, it's a huge bill for the city. So we need to make sure that we have appropriate staffing. Melanie and I receive occupation every Monday morning from first student. Right now they have a full staff, ten in train for subs. We are re-implementing the safety drop as of the first week of October and they are looking into a parent app, which will be wonderful. So that if anything were to happen, parents can watch the app. It'll say sub bus driver went down the wrong street, blah, blah, blah. Your, your drop off now is fifteen minutes later.
Like over?
Yeah, it'll be really helpful. I, I really wanted to mentor our students for the work they've been doing and the communication. Melanie gets all the backlash and it has been very, very deep in the actions. It's very little interruption. So um, we're very pleased with first student at this point.
We have any ideas on these things? Either drive here or get left off because I'm tired.
That line is long.
Unbelievable. That would, I went to school, we five feet.
Get on that. Count each car.
I don't count.
Yeah.
Get that move up. Yeah, we can order cars. It's a traffic counter. All right. Let's move on to financial update.
Melanie.
Now, this is Melody, the money maker is here for us.
Money maker. Wow. I love that title. I'll take that one. Money manager. There you go. Money maker sounds uh, that's, we don't want to talk about that. Um, so uh, first quarter coming to an end, you know, uh, for the school year, obviously not much happens as far as your expenditures go over the summertime, but um, you can see that if you're looking at our expenses, that we do have six million dollars still sitting there on the bottom line that's not encumbered yet. Um, that's normal for the first quarter. We have our insurance encum- encumbered, but we probably still have over a million dollars in tuitions that we don't have encumbered yet. Um, also, we don't know what's gonna happen with building maintenance. We don't know what's happening with our utilities and our heating. So all of that stuff tends to be a little volatile and, and so that six million uh, sits, but I'm sure it'll get eaten up quickly as the, the middle of the year comes and approaches. Salaries, we are still um, sitting on a lot of positions that we haven't hired, which normal for the beginning of the school year. I think everybody's seeing um, Paula's Sunday message where she has said, you know, take a look at our job list. We are hiring. Um, we are still bargaining with a couple of unions. So you'll see some of those lines have some big, some big numbers on them. We're waiting for that to be um, complete, which usually takes a little while into the school year. But all in all, it looks pretty good. We're pretty comfortable. Got a lot going on, but seems to be pretty, pretty smooth right now.
Hundred five million.
Yeah.
Well, I was just gonna say, you mentioned, um, my uh, my physics class certainly doesn't have a teacher.
Really?
Yeah, we're doing agility. Um, but I was just wondering if there's any, any like what we're, might take now, like in terms of marketing, people there, not if we are.
So, so just to clarify, you do have a teacher. She had a baby too.
No, no. No, she is coming back. She is coming back. She is coming back. I just, I just didn't know how long that, you know, how long it would, right now, we're just taking agility. And honestly, when we took agility, I've assumed it could be the whole year. We just don't really know. So yeah, that's a good point, but yeah, I just wanted to feel like, but no, we're doing anything like, I don't know, like
We post wherever we
It's everywhere.
We shout out to the districts.
Yeah.
So there's quite a bit going on.
Don't be afraid to share it on your social media too.
Yeah, with social media.
He has to have Facebook. Not that he wants to.
Twitter, it's the Twitter.
Coach me on Snaparam.
It's the Twitter.
It's where energy days, I'm worried. It's where the parents are. But no, whether
Right.
Ah, you are.
Yes. They tend to stay away from Facebook because that's old people now. Yeah. Yeah. No, thank you though. We are, we are certainly trying to put it out there and, and press it, you know, for anybody who's looking for a job and, and has the right certifications. So thank you. Um, but if you don't have any questions there, the, we can move on to the revolvings. Um, I certainly wanted to give you a snapshot of our revolving accounts. They're healthy. Certainly, we didn't have to use a lot of our school choice or our circuit breaker last year, so we were lucky enough to carry those balances forward. School lunch has a healthy balance with free and, you know, free lunch for everybody. The state is reimbursing at a very high rate. And so they're looking at lots of replacements for equipment in the kitchens. They're doing a lot of upgrades. We're still waiting on the high school to get their renovation. New furniture for the, for the cafe. But, you know, there's a lot going on and and we are plentiful with with some money to throw around. The Northwest Playground is coming up, which is very exciting. We've had our first steps, our first meeting on that. So it's, there's just a lot going on and and we're lucky enough to, you know, have the funds to do it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We want to talk about the action item while I'm up here?
Yes, why don't you?
Why not?
Why not? Money manager. The money manager. We'll stick with money manager. Those are actually my initials, M M N. Fun fact. School choice. Every year we have some, you know, we have things that come up after our 6:30 cutoff mark. We have bills that slip through the cracks. We have things that come from the schools that we weren't, we had no knowledge of or weren't anticipating. So we try to do our cleanup all at once. And so we come in for a vote to pay that stuff out of school choice. So this year I'm looking for a vote to pay those bills up to $13,000 so that we can clear those out. From 13,000.
I'll make a motion to pay those bills out.
Second. Anybody have any questions? Good. All in favor? Second time, usual man. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions. No? Thank you.
We have a vote to accept a donation. That's from you.
A parent of Priest Street has donated, would like to accept a donation of $3,000 towards the school for something, something teachers wanted, physical drugs or something for students. So I'm looking for.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Generous.
Thank you. And it's very nice. Thank you. Approval of payments from some choice we did and then surplus equipment.
Still cleaning up closets. So I'd like to get rid of some, obviously, but it's stuck.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Any questions? All in favor? Those votes. Moving your business, updating alumni field. Well, just to recap alumni field, style of field. And then we stay through and through and turn and roughing lights, parking lots. And so before we put out the bid, we sent it out as we do every project for cost estimation. In that, it's 17 million dollars. So we have about nine between 9.5 budget. So we met and ultimately what we decided to do is go back to original plan and that should bring this in around. So that's the building of a parking lot, but be realistic, most of these practices or whatever, or use of the fields is going to be during the day when anybody that's already here is. And yeah, it's like building the Boston Garden, all over it. So that kind of, we don't have that kind of, especially with another project. So what we decided to do just back to the original project, which is the field and and the track.
So I guess, that's extremely disappointing. And I get the cost of things so skyrocketing because we've been trying to, I think I've seen a zillion plans over the course of the last three plus years.
It's gone from this to this.
But so you're losing the softball field. So once again.
We build it all purposely. Remember, this was to have practices and to have physical education.
And to have the later tracks. We don't.
And attract fields. That's how it started.
Have any tracking fields that belongs to that state now?
So we'll probably rough it in still, in the original plan, rough it in. That's why we left up the neighborses. We rough it in and then later on, if the neighborhood changed, I'll leave by about the whole thing. They didn't want to to turn it into you know, we went from eight times using the ball to hundreds. Both fields used about 800, 100, but everywhere, the whole place.
So is there going to be a strategic plan to budget money and try to fund various pieces of the project? Because what I worry about is, you know, 20 years from now, we'll be still sitting in the same spots.
We have to, we have to, we have to retool it, get it back to original plan. Now we know where the costs are. We pretty much know where everything.
Exactly, because we had a, I don't know what the cost was, but we had a big cost. You know, we knew what the cost was going to be, say, five years ago with this plan and now obviously that's obsolete.
So for over five years, this thing's gone from, let's add this, let's add that, it's like this, and it's all estimated.
I guess I would like to see some kind of strategic plan going forward so that there is some room for additions as we get money. Also put something more building, a little more capital money into.
You still have the original plan. Original plan is there. So all you're doing is carrying it back. So the other pieces of it are still there.
Right, but I guess I'd be glad to see something strategic, like this is, you know, the next six years, we hope to add this and the next six, you know, whatever this under keeps stuff, but you know what I mean? So there's a conscious effort to eventually have everything established.
Yeah, I, I can't sit here and tell them today. I mean, we got a new school or a renovation that's going to be all. Got the police station, I mean, IKEA, City of City. I don't want to mislead anybody to think that somehow nobody, you know, this is, you know, this is like third in line, still have an early childhood, Centerville. All of that has to happen. And and again, if you look at the original plan, it did what it's supposed to do. And that's to take the track from, from Doyle into out of field. That was the original. So we move students between here and practice. And tried and, you know, Anthony Cleaves just got, you know, every time somebody's add to it, add to it, add to it and. When we put out the bid, it'll be competitive. So what we do is we go back to the original plan and then we do alternates. So we'll have to decide if bid alternate, if some, if it comes in lower and we can add things, one of the things we want, and you have to put it. You can't go later and say, I'm gonna take number four. You have to take number one. One is the high priority, catalyst. So you do have some, it may come a difference.
Derek Bishop.
I believe it will be. Again, we all know too, we reestimated, you know. There were a ton, ton, the Lumbergh, Shirley. I mean, there were a ton of projects last year. So all these companies were helping to do this. Hopefully, it's going to mean that athletics is out of the way and now those same people are competitive. Just, you know, pricing things. So that's the plan. I was going back to the thing too. That's what we, that's what we bonded for. Between other, you go to do otherwise, would require to start the whole process all over. And you can't have too much debt per ratio. You don't, I mean, that that's going to put us in a, that's far later on.
Just to request, it's, it's had been going on for so long, it gets sent to work, that actually tails the original project. Anyway, we have issues with transportation. It keeps getting this soil because there's not enough transportation or practicing, but if the track is practicing at the same time, they'll talk it. So that and then parking here is an issue and that was one of the concerns and options was having parking there during the day. And some bathrooms was another issue that they don't have access to.
What I see is finding this, the schools aren't putting up anyone, school decides to. Well, we're going to spend it all. That's one thing I noticed.
No doubt.
And that's why I say we'll have those things as bid auctions. So if that's a high priority, you want to put parking, although I think most of us felt when do you need parking? It's, this isn't, wasn't to solve the school parking problem. This was to go buy parking for fields. So during the day, if you're using it for athletics, everybody's already here. And then if you're using it for a practice event, how many people come to a practice event or a track meet? This place is usually empty when it's a track. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, you do, right. Just see, you know, I've been in discussion with the teachers and students where they felt that this was the focal ground to alleviate the parking situation that the athletes were carrying around equipment because they're storing during the day with.
Well, then we got, and we had that as a bid offer. If that's the high priority by everybody. You know what I mean? That was, you're going to have five or six things or maybe more, but you have to list them and then you have to take them. So you can't go, you change your mind later, you have to visit and say, oh no, we don't want one anymore, we want it for four. You have to pick one.
So just let the scope.
One, two, three, you can, you can go and all, say you can fund all of them. You can, you can, you can go one, two, three, four, five. But if you can only afford one, you can't say, well, we'll do one, four and six. I can't. So I'll let you know.
But the city's funding it. Who's in charge of maintenance after? And what kind of trail is the track on?
I don't know. Stall, the marden, you know, it's all, hold the world, tracks all over the world.
Well, you see, the field that was, yeah, that will, that can, it's a, well, whatever, whatever that track was, it was all beat up and everything. Big brokers are worth the investment though, because like, I, I run track across that tree. And I see it every place I go to, like the tracks that are pretty just interiorly, way to faster. They're just like, not very good.
Well, it's not expensive, it's, anyways.
Also, we don't want to spend more money in share.
All right, so we'll let you know as it evolves, but it's back to the original plan. We'll get it back after the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, other, are we ready to move on?
We'll go wherever we want.
Okay, so wait. One small question. Someone else brought up, well, it's less than. Yeah, official. It's, is it getting close to the end?
We have outlived the life expectancy. So we're, it's in good shape still, but we've outlived the 10 years that we're supposed to last. Lasted, we kept a cattle point and made these people done a great job. And so we haven't had to replace it yet.
But it's coming, coming close to the end.
Depends, again, as long as they continue to take care of it, I'm sure there's going to be a point where we're going to have to replace it.
Field behind here is going to be our official turf, we hope something, so. There's a bit of that. And what's the iron? Not trying to be that huge. But what's the, what's the, what's the radar? I don't think it's a turf person.
All right, one, you will have everything. But we won't know until we put it out the bid. We'll get into the cost estimate, but you really don't know until you put it out. So you may put it out as a, as a, you may put it out as an artificial turf, which I think we'll have after and see what that comes to.
And they're more injured. Just for high schools.
Well, I'm only the greatest thing that I, I'm not, I'm not.
I feel like they're just looking to debate, but I for athletes. Are the injuries more in, in obstacle turf?
It's like talking about tennis courts play or.
It's not like the vet in the 80s or just like this, it's like real field grass.
I guess, so they say in the industry, less injuries on, on, on turf.
Because you don't have the same seepage and the water retention and mud and other things that are.
But then there are high school, old school, I know, you have to, I mean, grass, so. So I'll get, I'll keep you updated.
Taking my time. So I asked earlier before you arrived, that I just add a student report going forward. So our students have a student, you know, give us on things going on in the schools. They both have one thing that they'd like to talk about tonight. So, Bo, do you want to start?
Yeah, I can start. So, but I first wanted to become their representative of CPI. One thing that I kind of wanted to implement at the beginning of this mental health. I felt like especially after the pandemic, you know, students are actually and I've seen that they're, you know, just as a first a first point of view of a student actually going into school, like for example, the bathing problem, as well as, you know, the child issues in our schools, you know. And like attendance, because you know how we want kids to come to school and stuff. So I think that mental health is very important because we want kids to leave school, it's cool. Our commitment on this, the hall and stuff like that, they may feel like less motivated, like to school. It's same with teachers too, like mental health for teenagers, it's very important. So that's like an important topic that I wanted to kind of implement. And kind of like talk with you guys and say like, well, I suppose some time, that, kind of put that out into our public schools. And, you know, hoping that we can bring more attention to it. So it's important.
I don't know if it exists, maybe the superintendent does, but even when funding was coming with the COVID, I kept asking if the National English, if the National Association of School Committees had like put together a best practices site. In other words, a place that we could go and say, this worked here. Not all things work in all places. So does that exist for things like mental health issues?
Best practices? No, it's about having the right people in the right seats with the right training. Currently, we have social workers, school adjustment counselors, guidance counselors. And trying to understand what their most responsibilities are. Part of our strategic plan is addressing the mental health. And we have an initiative in place right now to recognize how quickly our students are responding to. We have to build in a mechanism to say, hey, if the hands raised and I need help, how quickly can that be given and how quickly they see? Because there's so many different levels of guidance background, correct? So we're noticing an uptick as well. And sometimes it's just the nurses as well. The nurses offices are nonstop. And I think, you know, just in general, there is a real crisis for outpatient providers or community providers. So if there's anybody out there looking for a job who's qualified, we can certainly get you a job very quickly. Because every place is hiring, but I know there's long wait lists. So that's why it's even more important for personnel to be sort of, you know, filling in the gaps and making connections as soon as possible because we do know that there's wait lists.
Kind of like a small idea. So I know that, I'm sure they do have like a promotion program. So maybe we can kind of bring that or bring that into our schools.
We have in the past, yes.
And I think that would be great because they're not assumptions, you know, they're afraid to talk to teachers, they're afraid to talk to guys. I thought it would be great. So I'm kind of having people around our, like, you know, our agents that they're going to come and talk to. So this is great because the people that would put that in place are sitting out there right now.
Right.
And it's already happening.
Actually, it is in place. We're just waiting to get the training up and having Dr. Levina, his background, his and people services, Laura Van Doren, this is what she looks for. And then Jenny Oliver, you know, therapeutic services, this is, this is there in the field.
Just one second. If anybody that's going to the, is it the Mass Association of School Committee? It is, maybe there's an opportunity, they ask the Mass Association School Committees to set up a best practice site. Because let's face it, we are in the age of, nobody have, why does everybody have to reinvent the same thing? No, things work for all people. But there are different, let's face it, the Boys, the Boys and Girls Call of America is a pretty refined formula that works all over the country and all over the world. So why are we going to be out there inventing this? And if Pittsburgh has to invent it, why aren't we trading ideas about, hey, we did this and it really works well? And we trade those ideas with other districts, it would seem to me, but that would be the role of the Mass Association of School Committees is to help share best practices.
We have, we have platforms that we're able to do that and discuss that. Currently, for example, Jenny and Laura are most of those communities as well. We're doing community services.
To be honest, I love to see that because we have a community response team that we have. And those are the things we're going to be hiring full time. And those are the things, we're gonna be hiring full-time people to, they're gonna be working with police and fire, they're gonna be on the calls. We're working with people, we're seeing mental illness at the very early stages. We don't want that way to the point where the court has to commit them, have us pick them up, section them, bring them to the court unwillingly, have the court commit them. We want to stop this a long, long time soon. That goes for students as well.
And I think the whole overall is just to further have the discussion, obviously. Obviously, we can't have a full discussion tonight, but, you know.
Well, we need as many resources because we have to reach out and see what's working. What works in Amesbury might not work in Nottingham or, or, you know, Fall River or New Beth, but some things do.
And since we've had peer mediation in the past, just to, you know, figure out what was the positives and negatives so that we don't make the same mistakes and we can, you know, build on that, so it can be effective for students.
And I'm one of them. So I am a luck care leader, so I do work with luck. So if you guys ever need any resources as well as anything that involves like mental health, I can get you some help with certain people there. Because, you know, I, I work for the violence prevention branch of luck, but I can definitely try to, you know, bring in more resources. Luck is in Pittsburgh, so they deal with a lot of different branches of stuff that involves like mental health, violence prevention, OUI prevention, um, as well as other things like, uh, we have a DCF branch is there that can help with the kids as well. So there's a lot of different resources that are out there. We just need to kind of bring them in too.
It's an acronym to let us know initially. It used to be a suicide.
Prevention.
And they just kept the name. They're huge. They're huge. And they had Jen, did you work with Jen at all? She was awesome. She laughed, she became a fire fighter. At that, she was outstanding.
They have a lot of pretty staff there.
All right, anything else?
Sue, I have said in that, but something, oh, you have, sorry.
So, um, ever since I was elected, I had obviously thought the most important things, I just hear from the student body about the most like kind of, uh, just the biggest issues that they see overall and kind of find, try and find a solution to it or. I, I haven't been too successful with finding a stable solution, but like having you guys give me your input about the general idea, I have to solve it. So, um, I have some, a couple of like quotes that I collected. I just wanted to read them to you guys. You have kind of a mindset like the student body. Dude, this is from actually one of our ESL students. Students that don't do well in school are often those who are pressured too far and present the school because of that. And another, uh, other students complain that they don't get enough one-on-one attention and that they don't feel they are learning the right material to fully prepare them for independence in the real world. The overall message I got from the student discussions is that students need to be shown why they're here and why they should be learning. So I think that we take the, the perspective where we kind of tell them, oh, well, you know, you come here and you do your work, you're gonna go to college and then you're getting a career and you'll be, you know, paid well. But I think that we need to take a different approach of the way we discuss their efforts in school and explain to them why the value of knowledge itself is something that they should want. It's something that would help them when they come to school, you know, bring more, like, uh, improve our attendance. Just make them overall, uh, more driven, more driven to just improve their minds and make them become more, um, full, mature adults. And so ever since I, so my, my idea for that was basically to start looking at philosophy. Um, I think as a way for us to give them another perspective on their life and have them reflect on it. I think ethics specifically would be a really great place to start because it would teach them how to respect authority, how to respect, you know, our people who, you know, there's a lot of disrespect to see around the school. A lot of people just don't care what, you know, the rules are. And I think Principal Romano has been doing a great job, like keeping that in the bud so far. But, um, I, I, there's, it's still just a big issue. And, um, I think that if we, if there's some lessons on ethics would be very, both for students to understand rather than just being told what's right and wrong, why something might be right and wrong, and fully understand that on a deeper level. But that goes for other branches of philosophy as well, where they can just kind of understand their world and knowledge in a better, brighter way. Like, cause I, I just don't think that giving them the approach that monetary value is the best. Cause like, for example, like when COVID happened, I liked, well, I don't like to, but I think that kids might have been kind of feeling like they might have lost their purpose, right? They're in school their whole life. That's what they do. They have their summer, but when they're in school, they're in school. That is their thing. That is all they do. So when COVID happens, boom, they're taken out of it. Who are they? Who am I? What am I doing? Like, you know, they turn to things maybe like nicotine, maybe things like, you know, other substances and they, they don't, they just, they lose their passion or never really had passion for school in the first place. But if we could, if, if they had a perspective on themselves where they thought about, um, things that make them passionate, things that they care about, and they, we use school as kind of a medium for them to, to improve those, those categories. And I think that we would improve our attendance, improve respect, ethics, and like just overall make our students like more mature.
Did you stay on my speech that I made on the opening day of school?
That you got editorial?
Which is there? So, I, what I said is, is you gotta ask people what their purpose is. What gets them excited? What's your passion? What gets you excited?
Well, that's, that's.
Once I know that.
Yeah.
Or the teacher knows, teachers are here, I assume their passion is educating kids, get inside to have them stop later and say, guess what? I was able to do this and I came here and I didn't know this and you taught me this, right? I mean, that's their passion. What's yours?
Yeah, exactly.
What is your passion?
I, I, well, I love philosophy. That's why I'm, I'm a big proponent of it. Um, but I just, the only issue I had was how we would incorporate that. Because we're not just gonna like throw it into like a class. And I mean, must be our, I don't know how that works. That's something that I was hoping I could have your guys' help with, is trying to figure out a medium or a format that we can use to give them maybe like just, it doesn't have to be like a huge thing because I know that's really hard to give them any type of free time or any type of place where they can live at, but like something more than a club, but not as much as like a two-hour seminar, you know what I mean? Like just something where we can maybe.
I have a question. Does it, does, wouldn't mine have their own mission statement and their own code of conduct? I see somebody over at any agency that I work for, we do a team building exercise where we really get everybody together, a lot of stakeholders, whole student body can have a voice to really start to build your own mission statement. Why are we here? What do we want to achieve while we're here? I think that the students could tell us.
I think that would be great. I think we need something like that so that we can, you know, bring everybody together and give them a common purpose, a thing that they all want together. But I think the individual is more important.
One is, everybody's gotta show up because this is a place of learning, right? We have to be civil, as you said, you said it all, I'm just gonna put it in category, right? To, because we have 2,000 people in this building every day and safety is paramount. So we've got to get parents to send their kids to school rested, fit, and ready to learn, right? They have to know that because you're probably smarter than, you know, forget the sixth grader, than your parents. They probably can't help you with your homework, even if you're in the sixth grade. So everybody has a role to play and you're right, you gotta communicate why we're here, right? We're here, I mean, what is your purpose? What do you want in life? And the rules as to why everybody has to be civil in, this is a different world. Well, that's, this, this has, this place has to be safe. There is no question about it. It must be safe. It has to be or else.
Well, that's, so that's the nail on the head. You know, you mentioned that group kind of culture of like wanting to pursue that. I think the most important thing and the most beneficial thing is the individual, like just the things that they gain as a person. I mean, like I said, I love philosophy and I'm planning, I'm doing it, I'm studying it in college and like, it's just given wide in my mind in a way that that I kind of, during COVID, I was one of those people I described where I kind of felt like I had lost like that key part of me. Cause I, I've always been a student. That's really been one of my top priorities throughout my life. And I'm not a huge athlete or anything. I, I, you know, I have the chip, but that's about it. And so without that, I really had to dive into something, give my mind a way to figure out who am I? And philosophy is the best way for these kids. I think they can figure out who they are.
Get to the printing department, get the, the card department, you start putting those up on the school. All right, break them all, what's up there?
But that's the issue.
It's mine providing.
I don't know how we.
Come and see me tomorrow because Mr. Smith and I are working on it. This, you're kind of itching where we're scratching as far as that exact thing. And, and actually those, those kind of guiding philosophies that the mayor said, even, you know, to add one more, when people are doing behavior, when students are doing those behaviors that we don't want to see, for students to correct it too, you know, that's not what we do at LHS.
Yeah, and I, I think that would be more representative.
And you did learn in social, you have to learn how to adapt and pivot. You know, we never had to do that. We're conditioned, right? Did you get all the jokes?
And why did you buy it? Because kids can get taught if they've been doing the same thing their whole life and it's scary. And that can turn them into things like nicotine or things like just rebelling in general where they don't want to listen to authority.
Everybody's gonna do something to them.
I wish we did more around leadership and, you know, teaching kids leadership qualities.
Well, you gotta do principles. Nobody better at it than him, right?
Well, the, the military does leadership very well. But I'll just say, you know, ethics is part of leadership, you know? Holding others and yourselves accountable, it's leadership. Like, you know, it's standing up for what's right, even when other people don't. You know, these are kind of things we talk about self-policing of, of bad things. When you talk about code of conduct development or code of conduct, you know, it works best when one another, you know, your self-policing appears a lot of ways.
So we need a plan.
Yeah.
We are, right? Today we're sitting here because we're the school committee, we have a superintendent. We have a role, superintendent does, right? So, but that's where I start off the ASA is, we need goals that we can all get.
And see, that's why.
So we're all pushing in the direction, same direction.
I know my job was just to talk with the student's perspective and that's, that's, I think, a solution I could bring, but I'm not the one who's gonna be able to, you know, solve that. I just don't know what to really do. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
We might need your help to engage other students.
Mr. Freel too, uh, the librarian, he's the one who I took my independent study philosophy class with. I, I pretty much trivially, like everything I know about it, why I love it so much to him. So he can be a useful asset too.
Right, listen to that guy. When it comes to leadership, you know, the military does it well.
You know, but again, right, first thing is fed, read, right? Fed, rested, fed, ready to learn, and safe and fine.
Partnership between.
African field safety.
Between family, students, and schools.
There's also like.
All three partners.
An organization that was like called BBY, it was like a Jewish youth organization. It's like international. Um, I've been to like two different leadership camps.
Called the.
Uh, BBY, it used to stand for today for youth organization, but they separated, so they just call BBY. But, um, I've been to like a few separate, uh, two separate like leadership camps, one of them international and one of them regional. And like overall, the organization itself like teaches leadership and like I, I have a lot of things that I've learned over time that, that I also have ideas where I still want to propose it now because there's just so many and so many things they did. But that's another thing.
We have a platform to share all of that.
Yeah, that's true.
So again, it's, we're all talking same lines, you gotta line it up and we have to communicate to everybody, right? And the reason why I have to explain sometimes, right? So I said, you have 2,000 people in this building every day. You cannot have an unsafe bill for all million and one reasons.
And I think, you know, you're, have to recognize you have a population and everybody's not starting from the same place. Um, you know, some kids are just struggling about, you know, do they get fed or do they have a safe place to sleep? Um, is anybody gonna be helping them with their homework? You know, so there is a broad spectrum. You're extremely motivated. Other folks are maybe really worried about basic needs, so you need to take, you know, sort of a whole focus of how do you get everybody to be safe, to be accounted for, um, to feel like they're part of the collective good. So just keep that in mind. Everybody's not starting from where you're starting.
Well, so, but that's a great point, but I, I think that that's exactly what philosophy does, is it gives us that perspective where they have things that they're really struggling with. Of course not, including like not having a meal for dinner. But, you know, if maybe they're, they're just struggling, depression, anxiety, or just any other struggle, it can give them that perspective where they can figure out ways, not psychologically to deal with it, but just a broader sense of the world and maturity where they can figure those things out, that not, not fix them, that's.
It's awesome.
That's exactly why you're here.
Really? Thank you for sharing.
We're, we're, right, we're playing our role, the other consumer will get all, superintendent is the man. We have a role to play. We want everybody pushing the same urge, same place, right? Superintendent said at the very beginning, yeah, we've got to get kids back into the schools. We have to get, we've got to get kids that we've lost that haven't been coming to school, find out why they're not, and let's get them back here, right? That's, that should be everybody's goals. Principal Romano said the same, we all have to be saying that. You said it tonight. So that's how we get things done, right? Everybody pushing the same.
Do I have something to interview?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'd like to request, um, the policy subcommittee was not listed here. I don't see it anywhere else listed.
What happened?
Um, but, but we did hold it tonight. Um, and we were hoping to do the first reading of, um, one of the policies, the other policy that was in your pack, the other policy you're going to, um, we're running tweet and bring back next meeting. So the public participation expo meeting meetings, the BETH, um, we made some minor changes to it. Um, and we wanted to make the motion to approve that for first reading tonight. Um, and then put it on for second reading at our next committee meeting. And then we'll have, um, the remote participation policy, um, at our next policy subcommittee meeting. So that'll be the second, uh, weekend.
All right, so is your motion? Do we have a second? Somebody in the committee? Second, second, my Melissa, three seconds. Any questions, okay? Sounds like Ron Wright, that, Paul and Davis, you know, Brian, Andrew, those folks. Thank you. Now move on to.
I got. Um, so I was just gonna open up a can of worms, sorry. Recently, uh.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Recently, Masi made a post on Twitter regarding comprehensive sex education in kindergarten. I would like to open it up to having a discussion around whether we want to respond to, um, respond to them or talk about our membership. I felt it was, oh, my, my feeling on the situation was that it was certainly inappropriate. And I would like to see what other committee members would like to do.
When we put on the.
Whether we, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I can also. And I don't want to open up a can of worms at 7:45.
And I haven't seen the, I haven't read the.
Yes, and we circulate the posts as well as the articles. Yeah, I'll share with everybody. There was an article. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Did one of the motions that it's gonna be voted on?
No, 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 it was just a post they made on the chat.
We already voted on. What should she make?
No, I'm talking about at the MAC joint conference. You know, we have a whole lot of.
All essentially, absolutely. We bring up.
And we send Ronnie at the down, right, the down guest. So we just have that. So that should be put on our agenda, um, prior to the.
I'm not suggesting what we should do. I just want to make sure we get in front of the committee so that.
It's worthy of the composite.
Exactly.
My life is a flame, a flame on.
I know this is a can of worms.
All right, anything else on the new or old business?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I got it.
You got one else? Then email Melissa, someone else. Regarding, um, the, uh, paying for tickets. Football games online. The, I just, I just, I don't mean to be a hurting. I just want to know, one, is there, Paul, jump in and stop him if you want.
Okay.
Is there, is there gonna be a better way of being able to, uh, collate every model mine is being produced? And how did this happen? All of a sudden that's, you know, done online because.
So you want it to be done in person?
Well, whichever way you want to do it, because the way, Melissa can probably jump in and stop you whenever you want.
It's not emails. It was a Facebook post, just advertising.
But, but, but.
Just advertising that they were.
Selling tickets.
Selling tickets online, that it's through an app, that that's how they're wanting people to pay, not using cash. That it's an automated system.
So does anybody make money on sort of transaction?
I think like all football games, there is money that's going to the football booth.
On the transaction.
Oh, I think, I think, I want to say there is, for free tickets, I think there's.
But I just want to know, because the way it was written, you know, when you can buy the tickets were the relatives of the surgeon. Well, that's why I asked you, Paul, and all that particular thing. All right, so you don't tie us all up. Why didn't you tell us?
He sent that out.
Is it just, Melissa, is it just exclusive to football or is it all?
I.
Is that they don't, they don't pay?
It's, but I, but I believe that.
Believe it or be basketball as well.
That's what it is.
And that, that language about family members.
But I saw that luggage, um, they did have somebody at the ticket booth, but they're waiting to pay in cash. And they also had a sign outside saying that you can pay online now as well. And it does look much quicker because they're just looking at the thing, oh, you have two, you have two, you have to go to the post to kids.
Listen, if somebody doesn't want to go to the game, Melissa, but they want to contribute, say, look, I'll buy double tickets just to contribute. Listen, somebody doesn't want to go to the game, Melissa, but they want to contribute, say, look, I'll buy a couple tickets just to contribute to the cause. Perfect, okay, well, I know that you.
I just wanted to know, a good question, the money part.
Yeah.
Because, as you know, in the past.
So.
Ten dollars on that.
We have it all.
You trying to steal a little thunder away from.
I'm not trying to steal anybody's thunder. And I still get thunder. No pun intended, because we have thunder. All right, now we're going to go into, yes, 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 I'm.
Only because there was a tension in the public, and I know. There there was a discussion about the bathing issue in the high schools, in the middle schools, it's not elementary schools. Um so if there could be something on the agenda talking about how to. What the policy is, we do have a policy there, it just talks about bathing, drugs, cigarettes, alcohol, any substance. But that is the only government, every day.
It's amazing how they snuck it in, don't worry, it's not to hurt anybody, we're not eating anything towards kids.
Not smoke.
Right.
No, it's just another.
He fell for nothing.
And that's a motion to go into a second session under chapter thirty nine, did you have some?
Oh, yes, I can.
Okay, and uh we will not, we will, we are returning, oh, we will be returning, we will be returning, sorry.